Regular meeting for the City Council Thursday, May 26, 2022 is called to order. Roll call.
Councilmember White.
Here.
Councilmember Stitt.
Here.
Councilmember Amoruso.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ackerman.
Here.
Mayor Mike Felder.
Here.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ackerman, could you lead us off in the Pledge of Allegiance and everyone please stand.
The Pledge of Allegiance is signed by the United States Senator, to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, that holds true justice for all.
Item number three on the agenda is an invocation. In lieu of an invocation placebo, I would like to ask Mr. Spinetta to say a few words about a little child who was taken from us way too soon. And then following that, we'll have a moment of silence.
So, uh, back on May 20th, about seven, maybe eight hundred people at least showed up to Dylan Yocum's memorial at Emperor High School. One of the teachers there, Greg Wall, had put up the memorial in the first hours of the day after Dylan's life was taken by a driver, a reckless driver over near the bus station there, so great. And, um, it's spring, the boy who was with him at the time was at school the next day helping with the memorial, going, putting that up, scraping any of the rock up there in the field. And it was pretty amazing he was able to make it and do all that. And so a lot of people, I was just thinking about Dylan's, you know, thinking about him passing, but also his friend Matthew. He's gonna be having a little bit of a hard time, and he's got a lot of friends around him, he has a good support system. And I got to speak with Debbie, Debbie, uh, Dylan's mom. And that's a heck of a woman. She, uh, she started off memorial with literally Billy Aner responding to her words at the driver, love for all the kids and people that were there. And just, you know, talked about how her son was carefree and happy, kind of hugged them like, and just a real, real nice kid. A lot of happy memories that everybody had there, and everybody was able to actually laugh through the memorial. It's, I don't know how she did, she kind of turned everybody's feelings around from sadness and just said, so we can feel everything there, and people like me did it as well. And so the great thing, this, out of this community, you just don't see it anywhere. The kids at Argonaut, one of them is a boy who saw the student representative on the school board. He and his friends drew up a banner from Argonaut High in amorous colors and put it up there at the memorial. I, that was just amazing. And, uh, and then another, Sarah Walter, has raised almost $50,000 in his name to help out his mom. And then Campbell's are gonna donate, well, they have donated their derby car. And kids are gonna paint that all up in white and blue. The Dylan's number is 25 for football team and eight for soccer team on it. And they're gonna paint the whole thing, and that will be on the derby on July 31st at the county fair. So he gets to have one last game, one last competition, which is pretty cool. So, uh, it's kind of a fun reckless thing for it to go out on. So it's kind of a pretty neat thing for his personality. So go ahead, pal.
I hadn't been told yet. I was trying. And I'd like to please take a moment of silence for Dylan Yocum and his family and friends. Thank you so much, Mike. Item number two on the agenda is approval of the City Council's regular agenda of May 26, 2022.
I make a motion to put the agenda up for, uh, May 26, 2022. Second.
Then move, uh, second to to approve the agenda as presented for May 26, 2022. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Stitt.
Aye.
Councilmember Amoruso.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ackerman.
Aye.
Mayor Mike Felder.
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number three on the agenda is public comment. Under Government Code Section 54954.3, citizens wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time by completing and submitting speaker's submitted form to the city clerk or following the COVID-19 advisory instructions noted on the first page of this agenda. Speakers will be called by the mayor at the point on the agenda when the item will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep comments to three minutes or less and to state name and community of residence, but doing so is not required. Under provisions of Government Code, California Government Code, the City Council is prohibited from materially discussing or taking action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or urgent need to take immediate action that arose after the posting of the agenda. So I would open up public agenda to those that are in City Hall at the moment. Have those communities.
We're right.
Oh, okay, thank you. I was like, unusually, it's usually public comment, so thank you. So I would entertain public comment from those in City Hall.
Jim and I. Neither one of, uh, this is John Colber. I'm at your wife's. Who would step up? My daughter, she's got all the names. All the veterans are passionate. So to follow up with John's comments, we would really like, I would encourage everybody from the City Council and everybody from the city actually to join us at eight o'clock. Invitation, what it happened. A dedication. It's been an effort.
I may, especially maybe in. Uh, is that. So if, uh. Hello, somebody. Okay.
Excuse me, what? Yeah. Kathleen is really knows. Is there anyone else that wants to speak in City Hall during public con? You're in City Hall.
That's. Listen. That we have this one gathering together as a. I. Care about five minutes, that's just for being a. Hopefully, we keep all working as a community and maybe vibrate and grow out. Hopefully, we can all work together better in the world, because a lot of shit happens that we just don't need right now.
Thank you. Is there any more public comment that is within City Hall? Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak during public comment?
I don't see anybody at the moment, but I do have somebody that is saying it's hard for them to hear when people speak here.
Because, because the microphone's over there.
I thought maybe it would pick up the TV better.
It's usually, it's usually, yeah, it's turned on, it's on.
I know, we were trying something new here
Oh, gotcha.
for the people on the TV, for the people at home to hear, but I can move it back over if you think it, it'll help.
Let's, let's try to take a pause and correct it because it worked out, everyone put it in the, the meeting. Thank you, Peter. Then move and second to to approve the consent calendar as presented, please have a roll call vote.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Stitt.
Aye.
Councilmember Amoruso.
Aye.
Vice Mayor.
I, Mayor Mike Felder.
Aye.
Thank you.
There is something you see. Item number six, so we're moving to seven. Question regarding AWA management of Zinfandel Booster Water Pump Station, end to end, including management of IT and cyber security. First of all, Stefan, did you want to?
Uh, it's, it's up to the council how to do that. I think it would help, uh, first, what the issue is. And is, is Brian gonna do that, or?
I, I was going to do that, Brian is on Zoom.
Okay.
Okay, I thought that might be helpful because it runs comments questions. So Kathleen, the floor is yours, and Ryan.
Okay, I just over basic overview of the lesson. It is going to be a, of course, though, for questions and answers. So the Zinfandel Booster Station. Yet, uh, we see where, yeah, and, uh. Right? Uh, the original plan was AWA network together and co-manage the pump station with the SCADA. But we've run into a couple of issues with that. But is the connection at the booster station, it has not shown us to be completely reliable yet. Tracking it on an item. We have three days of low service and one day being completely offline. And we want to make sure we don't have a big fluctuations in, you know, our service quality. And since this is our potable drinking water, it's, it's very important. So that was one item that came up that we're concerned about.
Kathleen, or does everybody know what SCADA is?
I do, no.
Can you kind of explain, or Brian explain what the SCADA?
Oh, I'll, I'll give it a try and. How did, you're right. And if something, uh, there's alerts that go out, something.
Sorry about, connect. Alert, whoever's. Down, if there's leaks, those types of things.
Okay, the, the second thing on the server connection that we have realized is that the same system is a rocky system, and AWA system is a sonic system, and they're not really compatible, and they're not talking to each other. So that has become a problem as well, trying to do the co-managed system. Uh, another thing that we have on the plate here is the cybersecurity risk. In, in a co-managed model, AWA is the third party, and the city of Plymouth is retaining the majority of liability. And the, the city is responsible for the IT response time, which needs to be quick. And as we have IT response time set up now, it could be a few days, which for the general office items, usually is not really an issue. But we're talking about water service delivery, it could be a major problem if for some reason that pump station went down and people lost their, their water service. So that is also another thing that, that we're concerned about is response times. Now, if we use the outsourced model in cooperation with AWA, they will be able to assume the majority of the liability. They can handle the cybersecurity section, the due diligence, IT response, and so forth. Giving the, the entire operation surface that booster station without having to rely on. And basically, the legality exists in a, a co-managed model. City will have, probably to hire staff and extended consultants to fill in the gaps. Are qualified. Yeah. Staff recommend. Energy. Change of operation. We believe will be actually effective within a. Is on how to finish this. And if AWA is here, if you have questions regarding how they think they can support us with this system, they, yes, they already run for water system. They have the, like staff, they have the manpower, they have the equipment. And we are just very, and it would be very hard for us to fill those gaps. But like I said previously, Brian is the city's IT expert. He's via Zoom. In the audience from AWA, you can answer any questions you may have about how AWA could, uh, could complete this for us. And, uh, if you have any questions, it's best to me, because we are more experts in SCADA and IT than I will ever be.
Thank you very much. Here we go. Councilwoman, I'd like to respond to the yellow comment, are. Uh, Council.
I believe I have ability, I doubt it. And I'm ready to. Support, yeah.
And we have. Okay. No one using my. Hello.
Okay, go back.
This is what, huh? Did not. Touch for letting us know that Frank, um, he feel that we need to.
I think you just asked me a question, uh, someone of the council members. Because everyone's looking at the TV. I would, I recommend Dana take, we could take a few minute recess to try to clarify this because the audio is pretty bad right now. And I want to make sure that as this, my item is discussed, I hate to do that, but I just don't want to, you know, jeopardize the rest of the discussion. So I think we need to try to take a couple of minutes to see if we can troubleshoot it.
Okay. We're supposed to stand minutes, and hopefully, we can address these. On SCADA, please. Sorry, everyone.
Hey, so is the, is the audio supposed to be on right now or is it off?
Frank, can you, can you hear right now me talking into this?
I can, I can hear you really well.
Hear me very well?
Yeah.
Now?
Yes.
I don't know what it was, maybe it was just a loose connection.
Okay, yeah.
So you can hear now just fine?
Right, right now I can hear just fine. I hear some rustling that sounds like someone's covering up a microphone here and there, but I don't know if that's just background noise or, or not, but.
One of those, it's not gonna.
Now I'm not hearing anything.
Can you hear me?
Uh, yeah, just now.
May have a. We're guessing we've got to shorten the cord, so.
That's what it sounds like. It sounds like a hardware issue, not that I'm an expert, but.
Well. We're going to do this and hopefully not move anything. So there's going to be a cool chair in the middle. Frank, can you hear right now?
Yes.
Okay, nobody touch the microphone. And hopefully we'll keep this. You still hearing me or does it breaking up?
That's the best it sounded. And I think Brian's shaking his head too.
Right, nobody touch anything and we'll see how this works. If we lose it, it's, if the microphone's got a short in it, so.
Right, okay.
No, we do.
Since I don't.
Don't touch that microphone.
I don't believe we lost a single person from the audience. I think we can move on.
Yes.
Meeting at this time, so the meeting to resume and Mr. Kenny has the floor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilwoman, Mr. Shallow, board. I'm also pretty good at the area, so let's get the other headline. I just wanted to address the council very briefly on this. I'm the general manager of the MRRAC. My operations and engineering manager, Ferrera is here as was alluded to in case there are any questions. And I don't want to take too much time, but I wanted to be here as a courtesy, letting you know that the supplemental services that we provide to the city outside of our wholesale water service, which was being described here. My board is considering as part of its budget process, increasing the overhead rates that we add on to those charges. And I don't think it's really a matter that would be decisive for the decision you're going to make. But I really, when I heard that Rick was coming out here, I really didn't want you to make a decision on this tonight. And I think that we did that and then two weeks later, we raised the rates. So I just want to let you know what's going on with that. The way that we charge our supplemental services is strictly cost recovery. It's a time and materials basis. We have work orders for what we do for the city of Plymouth as supplemental services. It's billed exactly from our payroll system as the salary of those people who provide the service. There is a multiplied factor for employee benefits and for overhead rate. Over the years, it's adjusted because our salary. 4.9% of salary. Every dollar counts. And then we hit the wall. Any questions? This is all going to work and the decision here. You just wrote this in. It raises the water rate. This is a matter of perspective when I look fiscal year 2021. Usage from that year. And I applied as if we had that usage and water rates charged annual over year.
How are we going to justify this cost? It's going to be substantial. And it's going to be really substantial if it's given by those people that are giving the benefit. It's not really something that's. I would think that if this was something that you're going to put on a rate here, it's totally acceptable. It almost happens to have a load on the thing. Have to have. We need, yeah, it's, yes, it's. It's, it's a, it's a tax that you're considering to benefit one area. And it's going to be paid for by all the churches. And I hope that's not the case.
Kathleen would like to respond to. Thank you. We need to look at this as, the city has a water service that is for the entire community. And we can't really break it out into neighborhoods and such. It's all of us. We're all paying into the system. And we're all benefiting from the system. Now, I understand that the booster pump station is at this point benefiting the Zinfandel community. So I can see why people see it that way. But if I turn it around and I say, I'm Zinfandel community. Now I'm looking at it going, I have new water line infrastructure. And I'm paying for older neighborhoods that have a lot of water line repairs. So, I mean, you can, you can keep flipping it back and forth, but we have to look at it as we're all the same community and we're all the same water service and we're all benefiting from all the improvements.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, if I, if I may just briefly. Water systems like road systems, like park systems, like others generally, and this isn't a tax, this is a user fee. Comes out of the enterprise fund to fund these types of projects, but what Kathleen said is accurate. You don't rave these things up in the individual districts and have one rate for this particular community and another rate for this. It's a centralized system that everybody pays into. And yeah, you may have a project here that's going to benefit this community, whether that's water, whether that's sewer, whether that's your road systems. You have a separate funding mechanism, be honest, be one or other, or other numbers. The entire city falls into that district. And so when you try to split those things up and say it's now by neighborhood, it really gets messy. Because then you're not dealing with a centralized system any longer. Which pipelines belong to which system, you're going to start breaking up percentages of the main pipelines, this percentage goes to this area. So it is one big system. So even though it seems, wow, I live in the other part of the community and I find the user fees are helping to pay for this booster pump. Well, yes, but then Zinfandel community, their user fees are going to help pay for an upgrade in a line or a replacement of a line in your neighborhood at some point. So it's the whole system together.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to try to break it down easier for the public. Because there is a difference between infrastructure and services. And the infrastructure wasn't the development costs. And that what is on the agenda and what we're discussing are services. Thank you.
So.
Thank you.
And I do want to add one more part to this piece. So John, I agree with you on some of as far as what we ask for in the developers agreement. And if we miss this, we missed it. So all we do is the future, we get an RSDA. Kind of how we know to look forward because I'll be able to do this for the next projects. So when I took a tour of this with Rex right after they placed that, that, that unit there, with the thing, we discussed who it serviced and how it worked. Set. Zinfandel Ridge. It also backfeeds and pushes pressures around town. The water pressures around different parts of town. You know, on the side town. So it does benefit more than just. But again, it is still a service issue in other day, but it is. Okay, hi. Rick Ferrer with Ember Water Agency. I'm the chartered operations manager. Madam Mayor, council staff. I want to help try to clarify a few things so that you guys understand what we are going to try to provide to you if you need to make a decision for us. The operator record or the city. So this new pump, you know, then that's given mechanically. Means privacy controls and data acquisition. So as staff has tried to express, this is a monitoring and control of your system. And handles two. They're connected, it can't be separated and working with your engineering staff and staff here at the city. Future. Violation or issue. That violation will come with my name up to the city. The city staff has probably seen that, maybe you have seen that in the DDP type violation. Our certified staff will hold the certs and the licenses to operate the system. So right now. Radio link back to. So what we're going to be doing is if you have this, we'll be adding this component to that system. Screens are already built, all alarms have been tested. We did come up with a new communication link. And I think the one benefit that everyone needs to understand. Taking this off of your business network. You do never want to have your business and your industrial together. This side from the, from the industrial side. So separating very good architecture and that's what I would recommend you doing. Go right now. Radio. The top store art right now. After these hard ones, which is cast or eight. Dell modem, which is what we tested today. Implement with. Next best, I would advise going forward, we could look at a radio system and which is very low cost. It's not a huge difference. What you're doing is. Holding on, I think. But what you'll be doing is handing this piece over to our operations staff who are ready on your system 24/7. So that would just be an additional contract. I don't know what the cost would be. One thing though, the council should, staff should recognize. Are there any of these systems? We, we have, and I'm just strictly talking for the county need. All of it, all of that water AC is on a SCADA system and the city of Plymouth is on a SCADA system right now with that tank connection. And we monitor that through our SCADA system today right now. So it's up and running. This would be in addition to it, very simple. Okay. And then my only other question is so. I don't even know. Just for informational, are, are small towns, is this a common thing that they get attacked through cyber hacking? Their water systems, those things. Because I know it's become a new thing in small businesses, it's going out of hand.
Yeah, so I can. So from the utility standpoint, the EPA has tons of education. I mean, they are really focused on this. There have been other agencies had both, you know, from a utility part have both been had treatment plans. Separating this from your business side and making this an industrial standalone system is going to separate you from a lot of cyber issues at all. That is really what they are telling staff to do now. It's a little ironic that I've been doing SCADA for 30 plus years, automating things. And now they're telling you to go back to a manual separation operating mode just because of the side of site. A real separation of the two cities, best way to do it. We are in the middle of it right now, separating both of them, completely separation of business and industrial. So there is not even a physical connection between the two. So that's, that's where we're headed. That's where the industry's headed. That's what I would suggest you do here. And what we're towards, cell connection or radio connection, that would separate.
That's what I would suggest you do here and what we're towards, cell connection or radio connection, that would, that separation.
And then I only have one last question that's more about me. I'm sorry, it's, it just comes down to cost sometime, you just can't avoid costs. That's, I hate to say that, but sometimes you just can't. These guys, that they're the way the city can go around. That's all I want to add here. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Do we have any additional?
There was some confusion earlier on as to who pumping station. And I'm under the impression it was face screen, Zinfen Dell Ridge paid for this.
I don't know about staff, but it was the developer that put this up and running.
Is that correct? And tonight, all we're talking about is, is monitoring the pump station.
Yeah, monitoring, operating Amber and the maintenance of it. That is what we do for the city right now. So we do all that for the whole.
You mentioned that there's been some, some problems with it. As far as, it's not been reliable. Somebody mentioned it.
Yeah.
But I'll fly a couple of times and it was happening, you're having talk, getting it to stay online.
So the communication link between Amber Water Agency and. There are two different proprietary systems, probably will not talk to each other very well, they're not reliable. Anyway, this new course of action, going to a cell or radio communications is the way to go. That connection between the systems, every time they made an update or firmware to those devices, you're going to lose connection again. And that's not, that's what we've experienced with that staff trying to work. We had to battle. Go to a cellular modem action, which is what we.
Hopefully, we can start selling homes up there. Much easier pressure to their houses.
We work for the city of Plymouth, as soon as the city of Plymouth accepts the facility, we're, we'll take it over. Under, under our existing contract, we can amend the contract to add this facility.
And this P, that should, I don't know. And this system is very similar to other, other systems you have in the county and other places. There are other pumping stations that are reliable like this unit or are they very different?
No, you have an excellent station. My staff is very jealous when you had to have, because we chose a lot of older stuff. So this would be, this package plant is a very good plant. It has all the components I would spell out in an engineering design. And so you have really kind of the best of the best right there. So I would say this is exactly what we would do today. And we do have older pump stations, but not as new as this.
And let me tell you, it is beautiful. It is amazing. I mean, it is redundant, there's redundancy, redundancy, three systems, three systems in there. If one fails, there's two backups. So that, that water is always being pushed, it's really an amazing score.
It's also backed up with a generator set.
Yes.
Power goes out, the fire flows there, domestic water supply is still there. So it's done well.
It's really nice. I was impressed. I walked in, I was like, wow.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'll probably call you back when I get back. Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak on this agenda item? Okay. Look at, and look at. To my mind, I'm going to speak first, everyone. It, it looks a lot more complicated than it is. Because what we're talking about is operating a SCADA system that provides information on a moment to moment basis, 24 hours a day. If there's a problem, you can. I worked on a project on the east slope and we put SCADA systems in laws and ended. And because it's in the middle of nowhere and so there was no fire flow. And use the system, the cellular modem. And it has worked perfectly. And what I like about the SCADA systems is you can dial in what to the system, if it, if it is different, it's not. So, and I do understand trying to work parts of this, two different systems. It, it make, that makes no sense to me. What the only comment I have on that is I would have liked to have been in. I would have liked to. These are the costs involved. Having said that, there were going to be costs involved, whether we do it or they do it. So, you know, that is about, you know, being able to compare.
Yeah, and the costs that he's talking about are those service calls that are made, when they need to come out and do certain things. That's what we're getting into and based on last year's numbers. That's, that's the guess, you know, you don't, I'm a service.
Okay, councilmember, any questions or comments?
Uh, no, I think it's. It was well presented and I think. I say thank you for the presentation, but it was very good.
Councilmember Amber Russo, do you have any questions, comments? Councilmember. Okay, I want to make, and Vice Mayor Ackerman, do you have any questions, comments? Okay, I want to make sure that we go back to the Zoom because we did have some representatives on the Zoom. And if anyone wanted to make any additional comments, I want to recognize them. Ryan, are you still there?
I'm here.
You've been very quiet, nobody asked you any questions then. So I'm going to ask you the question because you basically are the city's IT representative. From everything that's been going on at the meeting, do you feel confident in the city moving this direction with AWA?
Yes, that is my recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan, thank you.
If there's no additional comments from Zoom, we'll count down to five. I'm, I'm going to entertain motion on this issue.
I'm going to take my glasses off. I made a motion to just to let AWA manage the Zinfen Dell booster water pumps, the stations, and, and clearly manage that of it and save the security risks.
It's been moved and seconded, not going to paraphrase Peter's motion. It's been moved and seconded to contract with AWA for the operation of the booster station and specifically recognize the benefits of the city because of the cyber security. Although, I can't do that anymore. So we'll have a rule called the. Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember State.
Aye.
Councilmember Amber Russo.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ackerman.
Aye.
Verifielder.
Aye.
Thank you. Item number eight on the agenda is council staff communications. And eight point one is the city manager's report.
Yeah, just very briefly, notice these beautiful American flags that are up and down Main Street. We want to thank, and I forgot to bring my list of the names of the two individuals that helped us out. They're masters in art. Jim, Jim was here, he was one of them and. Thank you. They just did a wonderful job, worked most of the day of down Main Street and putting those up. Second item for me really quick, just as a matter of information for the council, you've got me for three more weeks. So I'll be here for you for another three weeks and then I'll have other obligations. We are working very hard right now to get you a budget. Talked with Michael Holden, he's going to be helping us out with that. And we've got a list of other things that we're going to try to get going. We do have the, the advertisement out for the recruitment of a permanent city manager. We have, I think, at least, we have a couple of applications that have come in. That will run for several more weeks, I think, towards the end of. June 24th. And then at that time, we'll organize that, get that for the council's team, go through the process of screening. I'll stand for questions.
I just wanted to see if I can call in tomorrow and get a list of the application. I don't want to see the publication particularly because we haven't, but I'd like to see the list.
The list of where it went out?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
So, so you can pull a list of everywhere that we published the recruitment, the advertisement.
Thank you. So mayor and council member reports. I don't have a huge amount reported except to say that I want to thank Stefan for everything he's done. I want to, I'm kind of upset that it's a short thing. But I do understand, congratulations on your. Thank our staff for being so resilient about change and the way and paths to work together. And so I wanted to mention that because we have. In the last. That was what you just said. Some of my. I hope that everyone does. Love to have a considerable council force. Approve for this year's little heart celebration of a section. It's going to change and will, if, if I get a consensus, we can, the staff could look at options and costs. If it was cost prohibitive of some places or what, names sense others. So. Started May 30. To be a, a community that they bring the Vietnam Veterans War to. And I would like consensus for us to look into. Our chance. Would never be able to get to Washington, D.C. to see the wall. So I know I keep talking about the heart thing, but one thing that we're. We have to keep parking issues. Now, if I'm for next meeting or traffic. And we'll have staff options and cost estimates. That was mine for tonight. Do we want? That's now or should I ask?
Yeah, some head nods, head nods on those items were good. Some research, you can raise both of those items if you like.
Thank you very much.
In the meantime, construction costs have gone up at least 5% since this, this was put in place. Unfortunately, a million dollars is not going to go as far as it would have five months ago. I want to give some, I would like to jeopardize this. We need to move forward with this. Both myself and the city manager have, have reached out to Caltrans to try and set up a meeting with them to find out what, what we, what we need to do next. I had a brief conversation with them. They're going to try and get us another four, four months additional time to fit, to complete this project, which by the way, is supposed to be completed by June next year. It's, it's not a time. I think. That's one I would talk about. Two other items that we, we voted on. One was the, the purification of the two parks, McVeigh Park and Lodge Hill. And I think it needs to back in that again. The mayor told me this evening that she thought we had another year and a half before we could spend the money. I would sure hate to see that money run. As well as the Caltrans money, because we, we kind of have a history here. The three, I bumped into the current sheriff, Gary Redman. And some months ago, we approved of two monies that we, we were, we. Law enforcement, we agreed months ago to spend the money on two patrol cars and a couple of radar trailers as well. And I asked him if he's got his cars yet, and he said, I don't think it has been done. And that concerns me as well. I have no idea how much time we have there. But there is, you know, I want to. Mention tonight so that we don't forget about these three things. The Caltrans, the three, the two parts and the cars for the sheriff. And I think, but rather than mayor.
Yeah, I just wanted to make one clarification. Are not, the cops money are allocated by the state based on what is available each year. And that's allocated throughout the system. If these were monies that were in excess of our contract costs.
But it's not our money, not our money, right?
It was.
We either got to give back to them or buy their cars.
No, we didn't have to, but we voted to. So that's where we are.
And the sheriff was the one who was.
Yes. Yes, so I just. But. But we do have the two radar trailers in the courtyard, they are secure.
New ones.
And those radar trailers that we have in the courtyard are from ACTC, ACTC, the.
No, part of that money.
No, it's my understanding that's what purchased the cops money. Okay, well, thank you.
I'll, I'll follow the vehicles. I'm not sure, I'll have to find out what the agreement says. I think we wouldn't be buying it, we'd be giving the money to them.
And they just need to do a purchase order?
Yeah.
I did talk to Gary Redman a week, two weeks ago.
Okay, I'll get with them and we'll figure that out. That's all I need.
Thank you, Doug. Councilmember Amber Russo.
That.
Councilmember White.
We had two amazing events in our city. I was last weekend. Um, I didn't, not have a momos though. I, I, but I didn't, um, first place I did go check out was Lava Dogging. Uh, super excited for Karen. Just seems like he's just in a world of happiness right now. And then the smoke jumpers event was quite an amazing event. I became very educated. Um, so with all that though, future agenda items. I hate to say our, our way of finding knowledge and I've seen this topic being brought up multiple times through Facebook. But, uh, the racetrack a couple of roads down, uh, we probably should bring that back up on the future agenda items.
That's what I was talking about, it is on the next.
Yeah.
That will be on for the next year.
Yeah, we'll raise some suggestions. I, I guess we should make it all sure that, uh, yeah, I just wanted on record that multiple council members want to. Yeah. Well, yeah. And it's a citywide issue, not necessarily just that.
Yeah, just that, yeah.
And it's a problem anywhere.
And we had discussed that prior again, said that, but we also had provided direction. We need some options for these people or bring them in for discussion, you know? But I've, I'm confident after talking to Stefan that we're, Stefan, that we're going to get a lot of good information and options.
Yeah, I really like to work this usually as a staff is when there's something the council wants to discuss. It's generally best if the staff has time to go back, do some research, find out what different pros and cons are. Are there some costs attached to some of the ideas that you're wanting to take around? So that you have all of that information available to you before you begin. Discussing and liberating or kicking around or spitballing. So you got some good. Be sure to do that. That's good. Catherine is working with some folks here, but you look at what kinds of options. And. Uh, everything from this is a, this is the least expensive of the most and there's what kinds of results you may be able to evaluate. And, and what the negative is on.
And will be discussing. Vice Mayor Ackerman.
Uh, that I also agree that traffic issues need to be, need to come up for discussion soon. And maybe this isn't like to discuss it, but my. In. Um, can we get those radar trailers out there? Or do I have to ask those questions when it's on the agenda?
No, you don't have to wait for the agenda or something like that. I, I don't know what it would take to get a radar trailer out.
Yeah, I'm available. The issue right now. It, this happens with all these transitions. The people that were connected to the. That your computer system and login and whatnot are not. So I'm going to have to go back to company and see if I can become the contact person that I. Yeah, that, that was my first. Up there. To connect.